We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session Number 2022-01 for January 18, 2022. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy kingdom come.
And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
With allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda with the five listed items.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. At this time, we have a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. We have a representative, I believe Ashley Shepherd from Big Brothers and Big Sisters? Don't know? No. Tyler, if you could join Councilman Ernie Davis, Vice President Davis, at the podium?
Whereas during the National Mentoring Month, we celebrate dedicated men and women who volunteer their time, talent, resources to teach and empower young people and those in need of guidance. And whereas mentors come from diverse backgrounds and improve the lives of American youth, helping them grow into responsible adults. And whereas in Wycomico County, across our country, mentors serve not only as role models for young people, but also as inspiration to dream big and pursue any goal regardless of circumstances. And whereas these acts of generosity and compassion are remembered that each of us has deeper purpose and can make a positive difference in lives of youth. Now therefore, in recognition of numerous contributions made by mentors in Wycomico County, we have resolved that Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Council hereby proclaim January 2022 as National Mentoring Month, done this day, 18th day of January 2022.
If you can stand in front of the podium so I can take a picture?
Sure.
We didn't catch your name. So did you say Tyler?
Tyler Phillips.
Phillips. Good to have you here.
Can you hold out the proclamation?
Come on, guys.
Little to the left. Tuck your head.
Don't want to mess with it too much. Hi, I just want to thank the council for, you know, doing this proclamation for us. We've been all around in, you know, Somerset, Dorchester, everybody's kind of doing their own thing, and we certainly appreciate it, especially here in Wycomico where we do most of our work. I mean, we are based, you know, just a couple buildings over downtown. So if you ever want to stop by and say hi, we're in the Greater Salisbury Building on the third floor. We are always looking for people that are looking to be mentors, or if you know somebody that has a child or a family that is in need, please, you know, give them our contact information. We are right down there. We have a billboard, well, window sign, if you want to do it that way, facing the downtown parking lot. And again, just want to thank you again for the recognition, and I'll leave some business cards up here in case anybody that's speaking today wants to take them and give me a contact and is interested in mentoring. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. If you'll leave them with Mrs. Hurley, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 01-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, fiscal years 2022-2026 capital improvement plan, and to amend Resolution Number 47-2020 to reallocate the project funding in the CARES grant from the automated parking attendant equipment purchase in the amount of $150,000 and the operating maintenance expense reimbursements in the amount of $49,000 to the design and engineering of a new above-ground fuel farm facility in the amount of $199,000. Council had a work session on this request on December 21, and a public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and posted on the county's website. And we do have Mr. Tony Rudy here, airport manager, if there are any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 01-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name and your county of residence. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 01-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 01-2022?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Joe. Mr. Rudy? Thank you. Just state your name and your position for the public, if you don't mind.
Tony Rudy, airport manager.
Morning.
Joe, you know, you have to push your button still?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
I know we've had a private contractor leasing property that supplies the fuel at present. When this is done, will the county take over dispensing of the fuel? Or will there be another lease agreement with someone else to, you know, dispense the fuel? Or how's that going to work?
When that agreement, or I should say, before that agreement expires, we will be putting out an advertisement for that same service. So it could be the provider that's there today, or it could be someone new. But the county is, at this moment, the county is not planning on taking that over.
Okay, but the tanks will be our responsibility from then on?
The, in the future, yes, we'll need, because those tanks are owned by the current vendor, Bayland Aviation. At the end of their contract, the airport could purchase those. However, they've been in the ground for over 30 years, so it's likely we don't want to purchase those at this point. So we'll need something basically to take its place. And typically, the above-ground tanks are what airports put in their facilities these days.
All right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 01-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passes. Mr. Rudy, you're going to be up here for the next one, too, I think.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 02-2022 to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022-2026 capital improvement plan to reallocate fiscal year 21 unused paygood funding to the airport to purchase automatic parking attendant equipment. And council did have a work session on this request on December 21, and the public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and on the county's website.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 02-2022. If anybody has any comments they'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 02-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 2022?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, Mr. Rudy, I'd say congratulations on getting this through. I have friends of mine, they asked me 15 years ago when the airport would get automated parking, so glad to see this occurring here, happening finally. All those in, all those in favor of Resolution 02-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passes. Thanks again.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 03-2022 to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 2,770.9 square feet located on property known as 104 Paddock Drive, Fruitland, Maryland, to an off-site mitigation bank at a ratio of two to one. Council had a work session on this request on December 7, and a public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and posted on the county's website. And we have Marilyn Williams here, Land Development Coordinator with the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 03-2022. Anybody that has any comments they'd like to make, please come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence. Seeing none, this concludes a public hearing on Resolution 03-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 03-2022?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Williams, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 03-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution passed. Thank you.
Good job.
Next is a public hearing on the capital improvement program for the county for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2027, and the capital budget for fiscal year 2023. Mr. President, with your permission, I'll read each department and the totals through fiscal year 27, if that is okay?
Yes. I'll open the floor first, correct?
Yes.
And then you'll, okay, fine. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on the capital improvement program years 2023 through 2027. Following Mrs. Hurley's lead, if you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to the particular department, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
There is a copy of the capital improvement program summary page on the table as you walk in for those in the audience, if you want to follow along. From the general fund, we have information technology in the amount of $600,000. Health Department, $741,000. Emergency Services, $914,495. Corrections, $3,435,000. General Services, $3,130,000. Public Library, $2295,500. Warwick Community College, $13,342,711. Board of Education, $31,287,000. Public Works Engineering, $5,600,000. Public Works Roads, $6,650,000. Civic Center, $10,930,500. Recreation and Parks, $14,023,692. And then we have from the enterprise funds, Public Works Solid Waste, $24,750,000. Tourism, $180,000. Airport, $61,837,350. The total capital project cost through fiscal year 27
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. At this time, we have a special update, a COVID-19 update. With us, we have Ms. Lori Brewster, our local health officer, and a special guest, Mr. Steve Leonard, President and CEO of Title Health. We appreciate you both being here today. Ms. Brewster, are you still with Somerset, or have you been relieved of that?
I was relieved of Somerset in May of 2021.
Okay.
So I'm full-time in Wycomico.
Great, great. You did an excellent job. Thank you. You have the floor.
Do you want to start? Okay. So as many of you know, or most of you know, we have seen a significant surge in COVID-19, particularly after the holidays. And just to give you a little bit of background on that, since the beginning of the year, in about 16 days, Wycomico County has added 3,215 cases of COVID. So we have seen a significant surge, and it's keeping our staff rather busy and Title Health's staff very busy. We in Wycomico are seeing a, still seeing a increase. Trends are increasing, whereas the states are beginning to decline. That's not unusual, because we seem to lag behind the state. They started increasing before we did. And the CDC has Wycomico County as a high transmission area. We had gotten down to moderate before the holidays, and we went back up, unfortunately. We are basically seeing one out of every three people that are being tested, they are turning up positive for COVID right now. We had had to increase our testing efforts significantly prior to the holiday season. We had been testing one day a week for three hours, and we are now testing from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, and then 1:00 to 3:00 on Thursdays. And it looks like there's some relief in sight when it comes to testing with the National Guard coming in to help out with a testing unit at Title Health. We are still seeing about the same level of vaccination rates. We have 61% of our individuals 12 and older are vaccinated. We are the fourth lowest vaccinated county in the state of Maryland, not a place I like to be, but we are still providing vaccinations two days a week at the Civic Center. We also have seen an increase in our COVID deaths. We've had 10 individuals die since January 1. And that's a concern, because even one person dying of COVID is a concern to me. We also are seeing a increase in the number of outbreaks in our congregate living settings. Just about every facility in Wycomico County is in an outbreak status. So they have at least three individuals that are positive, whether that be staff and/or patients. And we have one local facility that is positive with a current outbreak, which is the Detention Center. Of course, the state has been unable to provide us with all the statistics that have provided you in the past due to the network issues that we succumbed to on December 4, 5, somewhere in there. That was a very long weekend for us. With that, I guess I will turn it over to Steve.
It's automa, it's voice automated, so you can just speak and it will?
Too technical for me, I guess. Okay, so again, thank you, Steve Leonard, President and CEO of Title Health. Definitely want to take a moment just to recognize the amazing work the team at Title Health is doing, day in and day out, across seven counties, 50 locations. I'll spend most of my comments talking about the two hospitals, but the team is doing a great job. It is our sixth distinct surge, started a little bit before the Christmas holidays. And unlike other surges, insofar as just the magnitude, has been tremendous. We've had record days at both ERs, going back 120 years, at Peninsula Regional in terms of single visits in a day. We typically have 290 to 300 patients in the hospital overnight, which is a pretty high census point for us. Our budgeted census in Salisbury is 260, so we have quite a few more patients on average. Out of the 300 or so, about a third are COVID patients, so that tends to be in the 90 range at this point in time. Fortunately, the vast majority of those are med surg patients as opposed to intensive care, so you could construe a little bit less acuity, just given the number. But given so many patients, there are still quite a few patients in all units within the hospital. Sussex County Forest, just as an awareness, tends to be hotter, quite honestly. Nanicoke Hospital typically has 60 patients overnight in that hospital. They had 107 in the hospital the other night, which is obviously twice as much as their budgeted, almost twice as much as what they're budgeted for. And the ER, again, also had record volumes. From a patient flow and throughput perspective, as my partner here said, there are challenges with flow, so we have, we're able to manage incoming volume, but because we're seeing outbreaks in nursing home and rehab centers, it's challenging to move patients through the system when they are ready to be discharged. So we tend to be filling up a little bit more these days, which complicates things. From a staffing perspective, this surge would be more manageable if we also didn't have as many staff, unfortunately, positively impacted. So typically, we have, although the numbers are coming down, we were in the 70 to 100 team member range of positive infections. Now we're into the, on the lower side of that scale. And fortunately, the trend shows to be slowing. We do think we've peaked in terms of inpatient volume, and we're at this plateau at this point. Our models would suggest that we'll be in the plateau for some period of time. It's difficult to say. I think the absence of state data is challenging for even our modelers. If you look at other data, even across the, in Sussex County, they've passed their inflection point on infection rate, so the infection rate appears to be slowing. And hopefully, again, that trend continues to head down this way. And then hopefully, within a couple of weeks. Some hospitals in Washington, D.C., again, as Lori mentioned, they're a couple of weeks ahead of us. They've actually almost returned to normal on their volume. So I tend to be, I try to be optimistic and look at perhaps it coming down as fast as it went up, which would be a pretty steep decline, once the plateau obviously starts to come down. On the staffing side, I will let you know, besides positivity, we're not immune from the labor-related challenges, so we have quite a few openings, much like all businesses. And I think that's also challenged the situation. At Title Health, we are currently, we have about 100 traveling nurses between the two hospitals. We've made choices at Title Health that I think most organizations have not made. When I talk to my counterparts in other parts of Delaware or across the bridge, I think Title Health has done more to support the frontline staff in terms of specialty pay practices, as well as traveling nurse usage. Other hospitals, I'm finding are closing beds or limiting services, and we haven't had to do that. We're trying to, again, keep all services open. Our challenge that we have, besides the COVID volume, is before this, we were experiencing very high volumes. The ER was busy even before this. So managing really just what is a community that has needs combined with COVID has created challenges. So we're going to continue making that investment, you know, obviously, as long as we can, because that, I think, has allowed us to maintain a higher level of service as a healthcare system, probably as compared to most, definitely on Delmarva and likely throughout at least the state. So I think Lori covered a lot of the high-level stuff, so thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Joe?
Did I read, or did someone tell me, that cloth masks now are not deemed efficient in trying to prevent? And I thought I heard word Title Health said they didn't want cloth masks used anymore?
We, that is correct, following guidelines, and you know, this is a, you wish you could fast-forward five years and read all the evidence that we're learning. But we are adhering to the recommendation that we do not use cloth masks. Our team has not used cloth masks, but when we've had visitors or people coming into the building, sometimes they come in with cloth masks, and we're handing basically out surgical masks at that point in time, as people come into the building.
Was there a study done that said that they weren't efficient, or what caused that? I mean, is that?
There are some studies that actually compare penetration rates between cloth masks, surgical masks, N95s, and exposure times. So when we look at those exposure times, we are evaluating the level of kind of robustness, you might say, with masking, and the evidence would support that higher levels of masks allow contact, especially for our care team members with potentially infected people of longer times without having increased risk. Lori, do you want to add to that, or?
I will say that the, you probably heard that from the governor during his press conference the other day. It also was part of the CDC's guidance that came out late Friday that said cloth masks were not effective, particularly for the Omicron variant. And that's why the governor is putting masks out for the public. And we learned that the Health Department was one of those public distribution sites.
If I remember correctly, I believe they stated almost two months in, when this first hit, that the cloth mask really wasn't that effective. But I think they realized very early on that there weren't too many options that the public would have, so they figured that the cloth mask, the masks such as what you have on today, was considered to be the best option for the public as a whole.
I think there were some supply concerns early on, so there was quite a bit of community support making masks, using cloth masks and so forth, and I think that's largely alleviated at this point.
Question I would have, Ms. Brewster, you mentioned the fact about 1 in 3, I believe, testing. When you use that term, you say tested positive for COVID. Are you referring to COVID specifically, or COVID or Omicron?
So our PCR testing that's done at the Health Department or by the Health Department just test for COVID, the virus itself? In order to determine whether or not it is Omicron, it has to go through specialized testing at the lab to determine what variant it may be. Not every specimen is tested for specific variants, but as the governor said, nine out of 10 specimens are positive for Omicron.
So nine out of 10 are COVID tests, are Omicron-related COVID tests?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Joe?
You mentioned the number of deaths. Is there any numbers on the deaths? Have they been vaccinated or unvaxxed? Does that seem to make any difference, or?
Unfortunately, because of the data situation at the state, we don't have access to vaccination status of those that die. And I know that the hospital has limited data on that as well. We used to be getting that information prior to the data breach, but we're not getting it now. So it makes it really hard for us to plan.
Bill?
Yeah, actually, I might just repeat something that no Title Health had put out, Steve, you know, regarding the emergency room, encouraging people, do not go to the emergency room unless you have a true emergency. You know, I think a lot of people still use the emergency room as sort of a primary care office, and that just adds to the already overrun situation.
Yeah, if I could, that's probably a good point to make, is, you know, we did last week declare crisis standards in terms of crisis protocols. Anytime you use the word crisis, I think most people in the community go back to, do I have enough ventilators? Do I have enough life-saving equipment? That's really not what we're talking about in this situation. Throughout the, obviously, the pandemic, there, we've been operating under essentially a couple different levels of care. Conventional care is kind of just normal operation. All is good in the world. We've been in this mode of contingency every time we go into a surge. Contingency level of care, we flex staff and space. We bring in staff. We do overtime. Perhaps we're using additional space. We might adjust some surgical schedules a bit. The next level, as you have intensity rise, is this crisis standards of care. This, again, the goal is to provide everyone the same care we would provide in the first two phases. But the reality is sometimes we change care processes a bit, and people might wait longer for some things. Changing care processes include things like maybe looking at what people are documenting. Not that they're not doing it to the patient, but how do we simplify documentation and reduce the burden on our frontline team? So we're in that mode at this point. Again, the goal is to have the public not feel anything. Other examples, our supervisors are taking assignments on the floors. That's something we have done many times, but now it's kind of an everyday type of thing. Sometimes we have managers in staffing. Sometimes we're using space now that we hadn't used before. For instance, that intensive care unit that we built in the early part of the pandemic, we're not using it as an intensive care. We're actually using it as a discharge lounge because of those throughput issues. So people who are ready for discharge to a rehab center where we don't have a bed, or perhaps we're waiting for a ride home, we're using that space for, kind of, to free up so that we have a bed upstairs. So it's in this level that, again, we're looking to manage the volume and, again, take the burden as much as possible off the staff. There's plenty of equipment. There's plenty of life-saving rooms, life-saving equipment out there. There's plenty of rooms. I think one thing that, Bill, you mentioned, you know, as soon as we put that out, the ER volume the next day cut in half. Literally cut in half. And that does probably reflect the fact that, yes, many people in the community do use the emergency department as a source of primary care. Before we got testing really going with this latest surge, we had 80 people seeking testing in one day in the emergency department. So that clearly takes resources away from those who truly have it. Now, the challenge is what you don't want to do is have what we saw in the first surge, where people stayed away from the ER that really needed to be in the ER, and that was awful. So if you have a life-saving need, if you are having things like chest pain, stroke-like symptoms, medical emergencies, you need to go to the hospital. We've got plenty, we absolutely can take care of that. And that's the fine line, I think, is we want people in primary care. We want people in urgent care, but if you have something, please come to the ER if you're in doubt. in urgent care, but if you have something, please come to the ER if you're in doubt. And that's the message we want to make sure we also get out there.
By the way, congratulations on your merger into Somerset County, as well as in the state of Delaware. It's a huge undertaking, and congratulations on doing that so successfully. The only other question I would have would be, is there a reduction of elective, would it be surgeries, I guess, at the hospital now?
So we have, consistent with this later, latest order, really deferred elective surgeries that require an overnight stay. So let me first say this, I don't really like the term elective. I don't think anyone looks to want to have surgery. People who need surgery, need it for good reasons. We're not talking about plastic and cosmetic surgery. That, almost on all occasions, is actually done outside of a hospital these days. But, you know, when you have people who have bariatric surgery, joint replacements, these are people who have needs and are in pain. So I can tell you, we have pushed the limits, I'll just be quite transparent, trying to make sure we're doing anything we can be doing, so that people get what they need to be getting. And I would call it throttling. We've moved cases around. Some stuff that we might have kept overnight, we've kept in extended-stay areas until into the evening to recover people. Some stuff we have had to move, because perhaps it was, it could wait. But we're not fans of the concept, because, again, people do need, you know, they need the surgery for good reason. So, so we're throttling, we're moving things around, we're kind of changing care process a little bit, maybe using some home health instead of staying overnight. Things along those lines, just to make sure people get what they need.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
Mr. Leonard, I have a question for you. Thank you for coming in. I remember when my, my husband first started at PRMC then, and it's always been a busy place, right? And I didn't realize, until you went into the crisis status, that there's actually less certified beds now than when we first came here in 2000. And so I'm wondering, and that's something that's set by the state, correct, of how many certified beds you, each hospital has?
So each hospital is licensed for a certain number of beds. It changes every year, actually, unlike other states. Maryland, Maryland does it different. Every year, you're given a new license number that is actually based on last year's actual usage. They don't really say, like, next year, you can have this many. But what they do is, every year, they see how many you had, and then they give you a new number. So I think what you're referring to, if you roll the clock back, I think Dr. Ackley might have come when we had 366 beds, 400 beds, in that range. Typically, back then, that was before managed care, and patients stayed in the hospital longer. And so length of stay in those errors, back when we were 450 beds, was actually a lot longer. People would commonly stay seven days, 10 days, as opposed to now, the normal is four to five days. And that's really what's contributed. So our admissions are higher, but the length of stay is lower now, which contributes to less beds. And as well, lots of stuff, lots of stuff is done outpatient now, and just doesn't require kind of the overnight stay even to be admitted. So that's another change, so.
So is that something you think that we need to address at the state level, is to get more capacity, so that we don't have this issue again with the emergency room?
So I think, you know, it's an interesting conversation about capacity. It's, you know, with the pandemic, it really does test that question. You know, how much stretch capacity does an, does an organization have? Interestingly enough, part of our crisis standards of care is, we're actually going back and using double rooms right now. We hadn't used double rooms. So even though technically our licensed bed count has gone down, we actually still have all the headboards from the 77 Tower. So during the surge, we were always required to talk about, how many patients could we take? And actually, that number was in the mid-400s, because the 77 Tower actually still has all the double rooms, and we just have kept them private for so many years. So, so I think, I think physically, there's, there's capacity. I think, like most hospitals, especially across the bridge right now, it's, it's a little less about the physical space, and it's a manpower issue. It's, do we have enough nurses? It's, it's the staffing. And, you know, that's, that's a large question, you know, in terms of what does staff development look like over the next three to five years? You've all heard the term, the great resignation, you know, it's affecting a lot of different businesses. And we've seen it in healthcare as well, where because of the stress, because of the burnout, people have said, I'm done, and I'm going to retire, and I'm going to, I'm going to move on, you know, I'm going to take this job, it pays less, and I don't have to work as hard, you know, and, and, you know, God bless them, I totally understand. And, but, you know, I think it was a half a million nurses left the industry over the last two years. And it will take time. So I think capacity, it's a great question. And this is what I've kind of told some of our elected officials in Annapolis right now, we are just as much into healthcare as we are workforce development, because that's really what we need right now, is anything towards workforce development to help with the capacity question, because it's really about team members as much as the beds. So that's, that's a kind of a prime nail ass. You know, we're having conversations with Warwick these days, we're getting back to scholarshipshiping nurses. We hired 70 people with no healthcare training and said, we're going to pay you to be an aide, pay to go through CNA class, raise your salary to be a CNA. So I probably spend as much time talking about workforce development as I do actually COVID right now, because of that question. It's a good question.
Is that staffing across the board with all the different paraprofessionals, respiratory therapists?
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah, everything. It's one of the reasons, you know, we've always been pretty good on the allied health. We probably need to lean more into, believe it or not, trades. I mean, we have, we have lots of folks who maintain a million square feet here. We're getting into physician education with residencies, starting in the summertime, with the internal medicine residency. So really, it does cut across all disciplines.
Thank you.
Mr. You talk about bed capacity or length of stay, and if you take COVID out of this, how much of that is influenced by insurance companies as far as the length of stay?
I think, I think they're, they're an influencer, but I don't know if I would consider it to be significant. They're a headache, I'm not going to lie to you. You know, they, they tend to, yeah, they tend to, if there's any insurance people here, my apologies.
They're watching, they're watching.
They, they tend to ask a lot of questions on the front end. Once you get the patient in the hospital, honestly, it's less of an issue. You do have to get authorizations for, like, nursing home and rehab. So it's steps to take, but when I talk about a five-day length of stay, maybe it's a half a day. It's, it's hours, not days, you know? They come, the governor and the, through Secretary Schrader, especially during this latest aspect of the pandemic, the insurance companies have been great, they've totally discontinued authorizations, they've, they've taken a lot of those things away. But even before the pandemic, you know, I mean, 20 years ago with managed care, 25 years ago, it was, it was worse. But I think, again, the industry, if you talk about high-quality, low-cost, should be asking questions and saying, you know, how can I move this patient to a lower cost of care? These are questions we should be asking. And insurance companies, you know, they help us ask it, and, you know, sometimes it's a little bit of a headache.
This is somewhat off the COVID subject, but what are you typically seeing in the emergency room that's, aside from COVID, people are coming for?
So I'll tell you what I tell people in orientation. We do about 90, before COVID, we did about 90,000 ER visits, and there was a data sample that kind of supported this. I think it's probably still accurate. Most people I talk to say it's pretty accurate. 90,000 patients, I always ask the question, how many are truly needed? About a third of those patients could probably be seen in a primary care office with a doctor, an APP. It's the cold-like symptoms, abdominal pain, non-emergency, just basic, run-of-the-mill. I don't have a doctor conversation that I would call up Dr. Nateson and get an appointment this week and see my personal doctor. About a third of those patients typically are urgent care patients, where you might need some basic lab work, some imaging, some X-ray, I might have to suture something, I might have to refer to orthopedics, and then about a third are true emergencies. And that's kind of what you see in most emergency departments across the country. So a big focus of ours is primary care. You know, how do you get people connected to a doctor? Because people who are not connected with doctors tend to use the ER more. And if I have a doctor, I tend to use it less. And it's for a lot of the stuff a doctor could see in their office, so.
As, as I understand it, Title Health is a new COVID testing site, is that correct?
So we find out about some of the times in press releases with others. So I believe the National Guard, Lori, is coming at some point soon.
Yes. What I was advised today was there were five new testing sites coming up on Friday. Hopefully, one of those is for Title Health, will be run by the National Guard, and, you know, Title Health's providing the space. And I believe it is in one of your gravel lots.
It's a tent, yeah.
It's a tent, similar to what you, because you had a tent before, didn't you?
We've had tents.
During the initial surge?
Yes.
So it's, it's not like they go into the health, they go into the emergency room?
No, the goal is to keep them not coming, like, don't go into the ER. If you need to test, go right over here, get tested, go home, you know, type of thing.
So what are the sites?
Well, there's 20 of them, but.
Where would they go, onto the, to your website?
They're on the governor's website.
Okay.
The closest one to Title Health was Easton, University of Maryland, opened one up last Thurs, Wednesday, or Thursday, I believe, and the governor did his press conference from there.
All right. So there will be a test site at Title Health, where the tent is?
That's what we've been told.
Outside of, okay. Do you know when that will begin?
I'm hoping they're one of the five that's opening on Friday, so that our testing volumes at the Civic Center decline. You know, we've had to cut people off at the end of the day, because my staff would be there for 24 hours testing. We were testing about 250 people in two hours. And we also are having staffing issues, people resigning for burnout reasons, or they can get better pay, or a sign-on bonus at other places that State of Maryland doesn't offer. So our staff has been very busy, in addition to doing their own routine health department duties that were, in the very beginning, we were allowed to forego those duties, but now we are required to meet our grant requirements, in addition to all of the COVID requirements.
Do I?
Yes.
So I know we, when you were here previously, you talked about the state possibly providing some financial incentives for recruitment. Did that go anywhere? Did?
Well, the governor's budget included a bonus for certain groups. And by bonus, we're talking either $500 or $1,000, but it did not go across the board because it was based upon your collective bargaining unit, because they are under unions. So it wasn't across the board, nor was it an equal amount for each type of position.
Very, it's very concerning, and serving on three of your boards, I know it, what all you have, what all your department has going, and that's, it's very concerning to me that you're losing so much staff.
Absolutely, it's very concerning.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate very much both of you being here today, because we know you have very busy schedules.
Well, thank you for the interest, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next of your consideration is Resolution Number 04-2022, to make an appropriation of funds to the sheriff's office from unanticipated revenue in the amount of $106,646. We have Major Todd Richardson here with the Wacomico County Sheriff's Office, if there are any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 04-2022. Second.
Second.
Motion, second, thank you, discussion. Major, good morning.
Good morning. Major Todd Richardson with the Wacomico County Sheriff's Office.
Any questions of the major?
Yeah, actually, I have a question, Todd. Thanks for being with us. The, I've asked this before, when this sort of comes up, so these are funds, are we looking at our material here, it looks like 40, looks like, what, 47,000 or so of those funds are confiscated funds?
That are forfeited in court.
Right.
As part of their, either their plea agreement or by the judge as a result of their trial.
My question's always, and it's the same question, to me, that money should go to the general fund of the county. How does it end up at the sheriff's office? Is that the state's attorney's office sending it to the, as opposed to sending, because my understanding is that's supposed to go to the general fund of the county? Now, the county might turn around and allocate it to the sheriff.
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking you to do, is allocate these confiscated funds that would be sitting in a unanticipated revenue account at the end of the year. I'm coming to you with these funds because we have shortages that were caused by our vast number of vacancies. We went from one or two to 13 last spring. So far this year, we've been able to hire two laterals. We just graduated four from the academy in December, who will come off field training in March. We have five that just started the academy in January, which will graduate in July and be valuable to us about September. And we have another one that's graduating in April, and we have one opening. So we've been able to go from 13 openings to one opening. The reason for these shortages is, is a result, last February, when we were doing our budget, we had no idea that we were going to get this many opens. I think we anticipated five or six in the academy for the entire fiscal year, and as a result, it's been 12 or 13. And these are the areas that are of the shortcomings. So rather than come to you and ask you for contingency, contingency money, I'm asking you for straight out of unanticipated revenues.
Yeah, I believe we, go, go ahead, Josh.
I was just going to say, I don't know if Ms. Olin was able to make sure that we're in the right process, that's the only thing that I just want to be clear, but I also don't want to.
Good morning, Pam Olin, Finance Director. So yes, these funds do come into the general fund. They would just come into the general fund, and we wouldn't come to you unless there was a need. There is a need, and if you'll notice, the first line of this, anything that starts with an O1 is a general fund number. So we are amending the general fund budget to recognize these revenues and asking for these revenues then to be allocated on the expense side to the other line items. So if we didn't come, we would still end up putting them in the general fund, and they'd drop to the bottom line. What we're asking is to recognize them and spend them on general fund accounts for the sheriff's department.
I remember some time ago, we reviewed this process very thoroughly with the judiciary, and you noticed that these funds come to us through an order by a judge.
Correct. And you guys have been provided those orders, we just didn't put this, that in the main packet, but in those orders, it specifically states that they're coming to Wacomico County.
It did say that, because before, it was Wacomico County, it was to the, I think, to CAT, if I'm not.
Well, the sheriff's office in general, some of them wrote it just to the sheriff.
The sheriff's office.
And a lot of it depended on which visiting judge we may have had in court that day, what they did in their county back, back before. So we tried to get with the state's attorney and have him written consistently.
So there is more consistency now?
So they're all written to come to Wacomico County. What we're asking for the council to do is to recognize them to specific revenue accounts, so that then they can be allocated to specific expense accounts. Again, all of these account numbers are general fund numbers, but as the major stated, if we didn't come to you to use these funds, we would probably have to come to you to use contingency funds. And so this way, we're not using contingency funds to fund the accounts that they're requesting.
Actually, I appreciate the explanation, because like I said, as Mr. Cannon also referenced, you know, in the past, we've had this, where they've gone to different places, and, you know, so the fact that it sounds like we do have some consistency now, that they are going, which sounds like the right process, they are going to the.
They're going to the general fund. They would, if, if they did not have the vacancies that they had, most likely, they would have just dropped, we would have deposited them in the general fund, and we wouldn't have come to council. What has happened is, is that there are very specific needs that the sheriff's office has, so we're asking, instead of utilizing contingency funds, let's utilize funds that we're getting anyways, and amend the budget to allow these specific funds to help the sheriff's office.
Joe, do you have a question?
Well, two things. One is, you said all of these, there are not all of them, it's only like, well, I'll say only, but there's 46,000 that's confiscated and forfeited funds. Some of the other comes from sale of, like, scrap metal and things like that. But I think, in response to John's statement, when that was brought up a few years ago, we were, I think our concern was, what hap, what would happen if, say, the sheriff's department confiscated a $5 million, we'll use that figure. I think that was the concern, would, would the sheriff's department automatically be just getting a $5 million bump? But that's not what happened, because it has to be signed. So that's where the concern was, was before, but I understand what you're doing here, so.
So what I also try to do is, is that we, when we spend these funds, we allocate them as if they were federal forfeiture funds, and I file the equitable sharing agreement from the federal government, and it says that you spend it on training, equipment, specific police things. You can't supplant money with forfeited money. That's on the federal level. These are state-level forfeitures, but if you use a higher standard for everything, it helps keep it above water.
I remember that, that documentation, too. And Sheriff Lewis has said many times before that the funds actually help create an incentive, I think, for the deputies and for the department as a whole, and I can, I can recognize that, the value of that. Any other comments? All those in favor of Resolution 04-2022, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Next is Resolution Number 05-2022, is the bond resolution. And we have Pam Olin here, our Director of Finance, to go over those details.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 05-2022.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Good morning, Ms. Olin.
Good morning, again. So this is, finally, I've been working on this project since I have been appointed. So over a year, we've been trying to get this loan closed from the Maryland Department of Water Quality Financing Administration. And this loan is for $2.8 million and change. And this is to allow us to pay the water line extension that we've been working on from these funds and have a very low interest rate. I believe the interest rate is 0.3% over 30 years. So, you know, we did really, really well at the bond market back in December. We didn't do this well. So this is really cheap funding for the county. We got a grant from the state as well as this loan. And then the county has put in some additional funds. But this will allow us to pay off that water line extension with borrowed funds at a lower interest rate than we could if we just went out to the market ourselves. And the closing date for this is the end of the month. I believe it's the 28th of January.
Any questions?
Where would the money come from to repay it?
It's coming from the general fund. It is budgeted. It's part of the annual budget that we put together. And it is, it has been anticipated to be in the budget. Actually, I believe it was anticipated in the '21 budget for the first payment. It was anticipated in the '22 budget, and we'll continue to add it to the debt service going forward.
Will there be any revenue generated anywhere from, to supplement this, or?
Not at this time. This is, again, it's the city's water line. So the connections are the cities. But this allowed us to serve it, we will ultimately be able to expand the business park because we will be on city services versus a well.
So there's possible, in the future, there's possible revenue that would come?
There would be tax revenue for buildings potentially out at that site versus not being able to develop as easily because we would be on well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So how much did the, how much did the state grant cover in this project?
I have that with me. I want to say it was like $2 million. Can't put my finger on that right at this moment. I can get you that information, but I don't have it with me.
That would be great. Thank you.
And whether or not that was reimbursable or not. Others, we have to pay it forward, and then they would reimburse
It's, it's a, it was a grant.
It was not a grant.
So we don't have to pay it back.
Or we don't have to pay it and then wait to be reimbursed from the state?
It is a reimbursement grant. Most of our grants always are, where we're fronting the cash, but we get the money back in a grant form. And so then, don't owe that money back to anybody once we get it.
So, but this $2 million is over and above that?
This is above that grant.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Seen on, all is in favor of Resolution 05-2022? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olin.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Olin. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If anybody has any public comments they'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concern. Seen on, that concludes public comments. Any council comments? Quiet. Yes, Josh?
I didn't say anything when Stephen and Lori were here, but I'll, we'll say, you know, last month, I went to three COVID funerals in one, you know, one month. So obviously, please continue, encourage your friends and families to get vaccinated, get boosted, and wear a mask if you can. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seen on, entertaining motion to adjourn so that we can go in to open work session, followed by a closed session. The council reserves the right to close a portion of the meeting as authorized by, do we have a closed session?
We do not.
Great. I don't have to read it. So entertaining motion to adjourn so we can go into open work session.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned.